Council meeting at 7 o'clock. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand up and do the pledge with me.
I am the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Housekeeping item, all town council members are present. The mayor is not with us tonight. The next item is the Downtown Business Alliance.
Thank you, John. I was going to say mayor and town council, but I did speak to Jeff briefly earlier. It sounds like he's in Baltimore, so get ready for the presentation. So we've had a lot of great, exciting things happen since the last time I was up here. I think the last time I was up here visiting with you folks was February. But what I'll start out with real quick is back in March, Bo and I went out and visited businesses. We went up and down Main Street and visited about half a dozen businesses on a Friday afternoon. It was a beautiful Friday afternoon. And so Bo and I stopped into six different businesses. Everybody was excited to see us and visit with us. I think the biggest takeaway that I took from that evening or that afternoon was just the fact how they're excited to see us. People want to see us. People want to see their community leaders and come in and talk to them and see what's happening, what's going on, all that good stuff. So we ended up talking a little bit about, you know, just a lot of the stuff that these businesses are struggling with. You know, they're struggling the same things that we are struggling with, interest rate hikes, you know, inflation, and just regular business struggles, right? And so one of the nice things that Bo was able to do when we were out and about talking to folks is kind of just talk about some of the offers that the town has, some of the lending programs that the town offers, and some of the stuff that the SBDC does, Arapahoe and Douglas County Works does as well. We left some flyers, and Bo gave a lot of great information about what those organizations do. So what that ended up doing as we were debriefing on that Friday, what we ended up thinking about doing is why don't we have those great folks from the SBDC, Arapahoe Douglas County Works and Bo as well, why don't we have a meeting at our next DBA and let these folks come and present to our DBA members and let them know what we do or what they do and how they can help out the Downtown Business Alliance? So our May meeting will have those folks there. So we're going to have folks from the SBDC. We'll have folks from the Arapahoe Douglas County Works, and then Bo will be there as well to help facilitate that meeting as well and also to talk about some of the programs that the town offers for our small business owners. So we're really looking forward to that. As far as our membership meeting goes, Commissioner Abladen was our guest speaker for February. He gave us a lot of great information about what's going on in 2022, some of his goals for Douglas County, and some of their upcoming initiatives for 2022. Our March folks, we had Mary Colton and the Parks and Rec team. They were there to give us an update of what they're doing in 2022. We're super excited about the project that they're doing there at O'Brien Park with the new stuff they're bringing in. And so she was there, as well as her team was all there to kind of let us know what they're doing all throughout the year. They've got a lot of great initiatives for this year as well as projects, so we're super excited to see those. And then for our April meeting, we had Dean from EMG Group come talk to us. He's the guy kind of running the Parker Days event. So he was there on last Wednesday to kind of talk with us about what's, how Parker Days looks like for 2022 and how does that affect the Downtown Business Alliance and the retailers on Main Street. So he spent the whole meeting talking to us, fielding some questions from the members, kind of going through the map of where the tents are going to be set up, where objects are going to be set up up and down Main Street, and kind of how the new look looks for 2022. So we were happy to have him there. And he was there for our whole meeting, and like I said, took a lot of great questions, a lot of great feedback, and then he got to hear from a lot of our Downtown Business Alliance members, so. The other thing we've been busy doing, February 12th and April 16th, we had trash pickup along where we adopted a street. For those of you that don't know, obviously, it starts there at Music on Main Street and it runs clear up to the Urgent Care Center up there by the Best Buy. We typically have anywhere from six to nine folks show up to help us pick up trash. Takes about 45 minutes to get that done. Surprisingly enough, there's not a lot of trash in the winter, and we'll start going to that on a monthly basis here, starting in May, where we'll do it every month, clear until October, November, and then we go every other month there as well. So been doing that. I think one of the biggest and greatest exciting things that we have going and we've been working on it pretty diligently every two weeks since January is the parade, the Christmas parade that we've been talking about, that we've been working on. So it's official, we submitted our permit last week. Christina Gertan has been our point of contact for our permit process. So what we've decided to do with that is have one person, one contact at all times so that that one person can handle the permit process from beginning to end. So we're looking to get that submitted. She submitted that already, but hopefully getting that approved here pretty quickly so that we can start, you know, asking for some money, for some sponsorships, and well as floats and all that good stuff. So we're super excited about that process. She's been working, as well as our committee, parade committee, it's made up about six or eight of us, working on that pretty good every two weeks and continue to meet every two weeks. We'll meet this Thursday again and go over our process and assign some more assignments. So that's coming together really nicely. Other events we got going on, June 20th, we have our annual parade, not parade, but golf tournament, and that's going to be at the Pioneer. That's at 9:00 AM kickoff time. We're kind of doing a little bit of a theme. We're doing a little patriotic theme since 4th of July is right around the corner. We've already sold several sponsorships. We're only down to about four or five sponsorship holes left and have a lot of golfers signed up for that. And we're doing some really cool stuff to honor some heroes at that particular event. So stay tuned for more information on that, doing something really, really neat at the beginning of the event and then throughout the event, and then during our barbecue after the golf tournament as well. Other nice thing is Kelly Benson. For those of you that know Kelly Benson from Beautiful Art Framing, she is heading up our exciting art walks, First Friday Art Walks. So the first one is June 3rd. She's been working hard, her and her team have been working hard on that, bringing that back together, as well as that's kind of taking a hiatus due to COVID. So she's been working really hard on that. They submitted their permit for that as well last week and looking to get that taken care of and get that up and running again. And then a couple more things just here. We met as a board on the 23rd of March. We kind of finalized what we call the Friends of the DBA. So those are, that's a program that folks can participate that are outside of our boundaries, and so more to come, information on that. And then we also finalized our sponsorship packages, which we will start rolling out to folks who want to be sponsors of overall activities that the DBA puts on. So there are sponsorship levels that we created this year, a platinum, a gold, a silver, and a bronze, and folks can sign up at one of those levels and they'll be a sponsor for a majority of our projects or our events that we have and activities that we have throughout the year, such as the parade, the golf tournament, Trick or Treat Street, which we'll start working on that as well, and all that good stuff. Last but not least, just some upcoming events. Our membership meeting will be on May 11th, where we will have Arapahoe Douglas County Works, SBDC, Bo will be there as well, and then our DBA mixer on April 28th at 4:00 PM at West Main Tap Room. So we'll be, hopefully, nice weather, we can be outside, and hopefully we'll hope to see some of you there. And then the last thing I personally just kind of wanted to say, I wanted to thank you guys for inviting us to the study session last week on the discussion regarding the parcels. I know I've had a chance to talk to some of you offline, but I pretty much myself was very, very well impressed. I'm not a visionary, so if somebody puts something in front of me and tells me it's great, I like it. I like where we're going with it. I think some of the designs and the concepts are great, and it's going to fit in for Parker very, very well. So I personally want to thank you guys for letting us participate in that. We had 12 DBA members here for that particular event, and we spent some pretty good time talking about it at our DBA meeting last week as well. So that's all I got for you guys. I know it's a lot, but that's all I got.
All right. Any questions or comments for the Downtown Business Council member Hefte, please?
Well, Omar, I just want to let you know how impressed I am with your organization, businesslike sense, efficiency, and strategic approach as you lead the DBA to success.
Thank you so much.
Yes, but if I didn't know better, I would have thought you were from the East Coast with all that fast talking.
No, no, I spent all day talking to people.
He's Colorado.
No, thank you so much. Yeah, and I mean, I think a lot of it goes to our board, too. I mean, our board has some really great ideas. I know Chris is here tonight. He was our past chair. He paved the way, and Anne, you paved the way for us to pick up a lot of these balls and just continue to work with it and go down the road with it and make good things happen. So I appreciate the nice comments. Thank you.
Yes, and tell us a little bit more about the Christmas parade. Can you elaborate?
Yeah, so we're just kind of in the permit process. We submitted our plans last week, so it's got the route kind of a little bit of what we're thinking there. That's kind of what we've got right now. We've kind of got a tentative date picked out, but we haven't completely shared that just yet as we're kind of waiting for that permit process to take its way. We're going to be doing some really cool things with that. We've got some outside the box ideas. We've got a phenomenal team that's part of that group as well. We've brought some folks that have done parades in the past that are going to help us out with that process as well. So more to come, more to come.
Well, thank you for working so hard.
You bet. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera.
Barrington.
We can go like.
Okay, we can jump around.
Yeah.
Josh's not here, we can jump around. No, I just want to say thank you. I think it's apropos that both you and Chris are here tonight. The transition to you guys, between you two, has been flawless and just amazing. Truly appreciate your leadership, as Laura stated. Just some examples, I mean, getting 12 members of the DBA here last Monday to observe was outstanding. The last meeting that I attended, to watch the chamber come in and listen to the DBA members about placement of tents and some of the hindrances that we've found during previous Parker Days, and to get those solved in negotiations between two organizations. Again, I give kudos to this leadership, to yourself, and obviously to Chris Pryor. So well done. The organization is amazing to what we thought it could be, you know, many, many years ago to what it is today. I'm so proud and I'm so happy that you guys are so successful, so thank you.
Great, thank you, Josh.
Councilmember Barrington.
Oh, we are moving all around. Mr. Castillo, I would like to disagree. You are a visionary.
Well, thank you, Anne.
You had some big shoes to fill, taking over the chair position for Mr. Schnell, Chris, and I think you're doing an amazing job. Thank you for getting ahead of everything and being so proactive with your event planning. And I know you guys have a lot of big ideas, and I'm excited to see what you're going to do this year.
Perfect, thank you, Anne. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Yeah, Omar, just again echoing what everyone else said, great job, you and your organization. I'm excited to see what happens this year, and I'm inspired. I might find some golf clubs and try to damage some golf course, so I don't know.
You can't be any better than Chris, so you'll fit right in.
Councilmember Pogue, I don't want to.
Yeah, I'm really glad that you're bringing back some of the activities that you're sponsoring because I've heard so many comments about they missed them. And so I think that vibrancy for Parker is important, and with the number of comments I've heard that they're missing all of the events you're mentioning, it's wonderful to see that come back. So thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Cheryl. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Omar.
Thanks, Josh.
Appreciate your efforts and update. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you again. Thanks, everyone.
The next item, public comment. No action will be taken on these items. Public comment is an opportunity for the town residents and other interested parties to speak about items that are not on the agenda. The comment period is limited to 30 minutes total time. With each individual allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak, you must sign up ahead of time in order to comment, and the signup begins 30 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. The council will accommodate as many speakers as possible during this time. If public comment extends beyond a allotted 30 minutes, town council will continue the comment period at the end of the meeting, prior to adjourning the meeting for those who sign up. With that, we have two council, or I'm sorry, two people signed up. Mr. McLeod, you're first.
Good evening, council. For the record, Harold Smith McLeod reside at 25130 East Phillips Drive in Aurora, Colorado. I am here tonight on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Parker Rotary Club, of which we have several. You folks would stand? Wave, but don't talk. Okay, go ahead and sit down. The reason I'm here tonight is to basically talk to you about state of the town, which is coming up for the Parker Rotary Club, where we are working, of course, with the town on this matter. So on behalf of the Board of Directors, I am first here to express our deep appreciation for council working with us on these matters. We have been doing this for over a decade, and we've always had close collaboration. We can't thank you enough. We both do several things that need to be done for the citizens. You have the tougher one, we have the easier one, simple as that. All right, so basically, we know that what we're trying to do is help the community at large. The town clearly has its responsibilities, being taking care of the citizens day to day, obviously, police, and planning for the future. For the Rotary Club itself, our idea is to serve where we can for the community, which is why I'm here tonight. We are going to be doing a Parker Impact Award this year as we always do, honoring a specific individual who has been presented to our committee, and that individual is someone who has worked very closely with the town over the years and has been a major contributor to this community and how it's worked. So with that, basically understand that the Rotary Club is involved with community at large, that it's, we've been doing this for nearly three decades, and I will tell you that it's been rewarding. I am fortunate to be one of the only three standing members of that club that founded it, and they put up with me way too long. All right, so to help you get an idea of what we do, one of the things annually is, of course, the Memorial Day, the Memorial Day salute to veterans, specifically held over at the cemetery. We also support the Rotary Task Force, and we're lucky enough, one of our members was a founder of that specific help that we have for the community. We do monetary support. Twice, we have given money for the Pace Center during construction, as well as helping with the paying for the flagpole that we have in O'Brien Park, and we donated to the gazebo that is there today. We have the Crisis Center that we support, as well as every month, we have a Student of the Month where we honor a high school student, and every year, we give out student scholarships to individuals going on to college. As well as, we have recently taken on an Afghan family to help locate them, and we're giving them financial support and getting them settled in the community. The most recent thing we are doing is working with the town, dealing with the new Harvey Park, where we will be giving help as far as maintenance and cash contributions or purchasing something that will be decided by all parties. We were thinking about benches, but I understand you guys are going stone, so we'll see how it works. All right. Basically, we're looking forward to continue relationship with the town. It's always been non-controversial, non-political, and we just are doing something weird, which is actually thanking you guys for doing this. It's the way it goes when you sit in a dais. And I would like to say personally, I was a councilman of the town of Parker. I know what you put in. I know the things you do nobody else knows, and you're not allowed to talk about, but primarily, it's a tough job. You have decided to serve this community. You have my deepest thanks and sympathy at the same time. Is there any questions? Otherwise, I thank you for your time and attention.
It's usually a one-way public comment, but one more plug for the state of the town. Give us all the details on that.
State of the town itself is our major fundraiser and has been for many years. We have started that, and we have a number of contributors who have always been there. The funds that are raised are what we use to spend. The bulk of these funds are spent in the community, though we do international work. We do have issues like Brain Hands Ranch that are outside the town but support this community, and it is terribly important that this continue. Other than that, we'd have to figure something else out, and it's not going to be a golf tournament, just so we all understand that.
Mr. McLeod, thank you so much for your public comment. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the council. Have a wonderful evening and good luck.
My takeaway is our Rotary needs to get its budding gear.
Next, Mr. Schnell. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, hi. Chris Schnell, 15654 East Pine Drop Avenue in Parker, Colorado. Thanks for the opportunity to address you this evening. Basically here to throw my support behind this endeavor for developing these vacant lots within our downtown area. Had the opportunity to learn more about this, very rough, and I know very beginning stages of this proposal, and it sounds terrific to me. You know, when we, my family moved here in 2016, we came from an area that didn't have a downtown. And I remember the big discussion in that community was how to have that downtown feel, how to create that. And when you're not doing it organically, it's very difficult to recreate that ambiance, you know, the cuteness, the quaintness that goes along with having a great downtown. And when I was doing my internet research, we decided we wanted to live in Highlands Ranch. So we finally came out here to Colorado, do our due diligence. We drove through Highlands Ranch, we were depressed. So someone said, well, why don't you check out Parker? And here we come, we driving down on a Sunday, we see downtown Parker, of course, the farmer's market is going on, and we said, this is it. This is the place. It was because of the downtown. I mean, we could have track homes anywhere. I can get a big, 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 big house with a big basement anywhere in Colorado, but to have this proximity to downtown Denver and this cool of a downtown is very unique. But there's some pieces missing. It's like a puzzle where a few key pieces are blank, which is an opportunity, right? And so I feel like we are presented with this opportunity, and I just want you to know that I'm very supportive, my family's very supportive of going down this road. And I remember being in this very chamber several years ago with a group that was very desirable or wanting open space in several of these areas. And one of the leaders of that particular group put forth a plan for development on Pine Curve that preserved walkways, open spaces and everything, but still had development. And I believe from what I'm hearing with this proposal is it incorporates a lot of those aspects, so I feel like the community has been listened to. So thank you, town council, for going down this road for all of us. The downtown Parker is our crown jewel, the feather in our hat, the thing that's going to increase our property values, more than a Highlands Ranch, let's say. So anyway, that's it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schnell. Anybody else for public comment? Please approach the dais, please.
Zoom.
Zoom.
Oh.
Me.
Anybody on Zoom? My apologies.
If there's anyone on Zoom that wishes to make a public comment, please raise your There is not.
All right, seeing none, we will close public comment at 7:22. The next item, report items and comments from council. Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Shoot, I can't remember what I did this weekend. I am attending on Thursday morning, I am attending the State Capitol. There will be a resolution introduced at the State Capitol on recognizing 20 years of the Douglas County Partnership and Douglas County Governments, and I have a distinct honor of representing Parker and the partnership down there for that, so very excited about that. Again, I speak often about the partnership, it is hugely beneficial to this county, and I have chaired subsidiaries of that partnership, and just a great organization and definitely puts Douglas County leaps and bounds ahead of other counties, and I think we have some jealous neighbors up north that wish they could get along as well as we do sometimes. So very, very honored to go down to the Capitol and represent Parker on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Pogue.
Yeah, I don't have any news relative to outside assignment for Parker this week.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hendricks.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Last weekend, actually, Councilmember Rivera and I attended the Legend Gala, which was a 1920s-themed fundraiser for athletics for Legend High School, and I heard they raised over $70,000.
And activities.
And activities, yes. And also, I'd like to say, the Parker Senior Center this Saturday has a Shred-a-thon fundraiser. It's at Salisbury Park from 9:00 to 11:30. A $10 per card donation is suggested for any paper products you wish to shred. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrington.
Yeah, I had, I have had a busy couple weeks, so I met with Omar with the Downtown Business Alliance, and we had a great discussion. And then I also, as the Downtown Business Alliance liaison, introduced the My Main Street Project and had council members, Diak and Rivera, step in and save me because they could fill in a lot of the gaps that I couldn't. But that was fun. I think it was very well received. And I made a trip to Napa, and the reason I mention this is because it really made me appreciate Parker PD because we had a little incident and we were on hold with 911 for four minutes. So we'll leave it at that. You can ask me, I'm free for questions after. And then I had surgery this past week on my shoulder, so I've been a little out of commission, but I've also met with two Chaparral High School students that are in the AP Government Program, and I'm really excited that, you know, I know a lot of us have met with them, but just so excited that they are getting excited about local government and, you know, are taking an interest. And then on Wednesday, I have a meeting with two lovely ladies from the chamber. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hefte.
Well, I just want to recognize the holiday weekend we just had, to those celebrating Passover and Easter, there was a full religious events taking place this past weekend, and I hope everyone had a great holiday. Secondly, I did attend the Douglas County Homeless Initiative meeting, and at that meeting, we are still in the information gathering phase about how to tackle the homeless matter here in Douglas County, but we did have excellent briefings from the Castle Rock Police Department, the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, and the Lone Tree Police Department, as well as our own Parker Police Department with Chief Serapis and Jamie Nguyen, who explained to us in detail where the issues lie in each of those particular towns. And we also talked about future funding for this homeless initiative as well. I then attended a coffee with the Parker Chamber of Commerce individuals, had a great conversation with them, and today I had a lovely visit to our own Parker Senior Center. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My update, on the 6th, I, as a part of the Douglas County Transportation Forum, we yielded our time to the, to SEDO to go through a our time to the, to SEDAT to go through a Region 1 4P meeting. I have no idea what 4P means. I don't know what those 4Ps. We have a couple of people in the audience who do. What that is, for a couple of hours, SEDAT asked Douglas County specifically what the projects of importance are. They then reiterated they are financially challenged, and we created a list, and we're hoping that there is funding that becomes available. Something along Parker Road, but nothing specific in the town of Parker were on the priority list. The next item, Pace Center. I attended an event from CIFA, a nonprofit, celebrating 75 years of Indian independence through music. Great event. I arrived a little early, and I got educated on the Indian, Indian, South Asian culture, as well as the musicians and a whole host of other things. So I appreciate CIFA and the rest of the attendees with their hospitality. And on the 14th, I had an E470 board meeting. The highlights, traffic is 81% of budget. It's still 103% above last year, but lagging based on projections. And we introduced our new executive director, Beau Memory. At the end of the meeting, he will take over on April 25th, and we will have a transition plan in place with the old executive director, Tim Stewart, and the new executive director, Beau Memory. Tim will be coming back into town. He has since moved away. And we will be working through that transition plan. So that is the end of my report. The next item, consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and vote. There will be no separate discussion of consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. With that being said, council, I will turn it to you. Do we have any items to be pulled? Or I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to move to approve consent agenda items A through K, please.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Rivera, a second by Councilmember Pogue. All those, well, let's go to a roll call. Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Pogue?
Aye.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefton?
Yes.
And I signify yes. So it is unanimous vote. We have approved the consent agenda. Thank you, everyone. With that being said, the next item is ordinances. The first ordinance up is ordinance number 9.348. On second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving the agreement regarding design and construction of the development improvement project for drainage and flood control improvements for StroGulch upstream of French Avenue, Tantera, Town of Parker, by and between urban drainage and flood control district, DBA, Mile High Flood District, and the Town of Parker. Agreement number 22-03-dot-35, project number 107465. Mr. Mestha.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. This item proposes to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Mile High Flood District. The purpose of the agreement is to codify a proposed fee and lieu project arrangement for the master plan improvements to West StroGulch through the Tantera Development. Slide, please. So this segment of StroGulch is located within Segment 1 of the Tantera Development, which is generally south of Hess Road and west of the existing Anthology subdivision. This section of StroGulch through the Tantera Development will tie into an improved section through that existing subdivision. The developer of Tantera is obligated to build all the master plan drainage improvements to West StroGulch through the property. And as you've seen with several other development projects over the past couple of years, they're proposing to do so with a fee and lieu arrangement. And just as a reminder, a fee and lieu arrangement is when the developer funds 100% of the cost to design and construct the improvements, so they fund everything. But the Mile High Flood District agrees to administer and contract the work, both design and construction. And the benefit to the developer to do that is that they get to remove the drainageway work from their scope, the permitting in construction. And the benefit to the town and the district is that we get to control, better control the design and construction of the improvements. We think we end up with a better product with this method. So the proposed IGA that we're looking at tonight requires us to pass through the developer funding that we anticipate collecting through the subdivision process. And it requires the flood district to actually construct the improvements that are being So some quick higher-level project details. This drainageway, again, will utilize dendritic design principles, as we've discussed throughout the years. What that means is it will, as much as possible, utilize natural channel alignments and topography with minimal realignments of channels and preserve some of the key tributaries that extend out into the areas for development. Again, we'll be doing grade control structures here, both boulder cascade drops and then kind of smaller riffle structures that aren't as intrusive into the channel. A couple of key notes, you know, this channel will be integrated into the regional park that's proposed with Tantera. That's what this picture on the slide shows. It's kind of hard to see, but you can see the channel will wind behind, kind of on the boundary of the park, behind some of the playing fields and that kind of thing. So they've worked with the landscape architects and the park planners to kind of better integrate this channel and kind of make it an amenity to the regional park. So you will see that in the final plans and construction. And as we typically see with these projects, there is a trail that's located through the majority of the corridor. This one's a local trail, not a regional trail, but there will be a trail for the community through this drainage corridor with a couple of crossings where necessary to get to key locations and neighborhoods or the park. In this slide, it's kind of hard to see, but this slide was included just to show you kind of the overall alignment of the drainageway and how it does wind through the neighborhood. Again, there's very minimal realignment proposed with this. You can kind of see the fingers of the drainageway extending in all kind of different areas of the development. That's really the key to the dendritic principle is preserve those drainageways and then kind of the key tributaries where they are, instead of trying to realign them and fill them in and make it work for the homes, rather design the homes around it. So we think this turned out really well. It's a really good example of that dendritic principle where you work with the drainageway instead of against it, essentially. So the project cost is shown on this slide. All the items listed there under the project budget are obligations of the developers. So when you add up some of the final touches on design, the construction cost, contingency, we do include a line item for vegetation reestablishment. We've learned over the years that's a very important part of the projects, you know, once you go in and do this work. The vegetation is a key element of the drainageway. So we do include some money to make sure we can go in there for a couple of seasons afterward to make sure we're doing weed control and reseeding as we need to. The total cost of the project is just under $3.5 million, $3.4 million. Construction is planned to begin this summer. The Tantera, it's dependent on the Tantera development schedule. Once they break ground and start doing some of the mass grading, then our contractor will be able to get in and do that. And we think that'll be this summer. Tantera is planning on beginning work within the next 60 to 90 days. So with that, staff does recommend approval of ordinance 9.348 for this IGA. Happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mestha. Councilmembers, do we have any questions at this time? Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, we've supported dendritic design now for a few years. Are you seeing the results that we hope to see with it?
I think we are. I mean, I think the first two we have in the town are the Looking Glass Development, which really just finished its first segment, and then this one. We, you know, I think both the town, the flood district, and I think the developers have been happy with the product that we've been producing with this. It's a much more, it makes the open space and drainageways much more of an amenity than it would be if it was truly engineered and channelized, as you would see. So I think we're seeing that. You know, the runoff reduction portion of it, time will tell on that one. You know, we're just seeing the infrastructure being built. We think it will reduce long-term maintenance costs, but time will tell on that one. But overall, I think we've been very happy with the product we've been seeing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
Can you bring up the pictures, the picture from the questions again? That's what we don't want?
Exactly.
No, I wonder if you could just take me simply through. So it's fee and lieu, so the developer hands the town the money. The town then, good, walk me through the basics of it real quick.
Yeah, so I guess to start from the beginning. So when the design began, the engineer, which is Mueller Engineering for this project, actually contracted directly with the developer to fund the design. So that didn't involve the town. But when we get to the construction portion, we want to codify that with an IGA, because we will be taking in the money through our subdivision agreement that comes with it. So they're nearing final plans. When they do, with the first filing in Tantera with a subdivision agreement, there will be a line item that says that the developer shall pay to the town $3.4 million for the drainageway design for West StroGulch. The town will accept that money, and then if this IGA is approved, the town will then pass on that money to the flood district. That IGA obligates the flood district to actually bid and construct those improvements. So we're passing the money on to the flood district, but they're in turn obligated to build the improvements that we're codifying.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
So I understand that there's a fee and lieu. With, what problems have you come up against with? So they're maintaining it, but we're building it, we're helping them to build it so it's designed properly.
Right. So the town's code requires any developer to design and construct master plan drainage improvements for any major drainageway on their property. So West StroGulch is a major drainageway, so it is an obligation of the developer to build those. If it's designed and constructed per Mile High Flood District criteria, it will be eligible for maintenance through both the flood district and through the town stormwater utility. So they're obligated to build it, and ultimately, the HOA or the metro district will own the drainageway, but it will be eligible for maintenance assistance through the town and the flood district. Does that answer your question?
I think so. So if we help them with that process, it's probably going to be a lot safer, and it's going to look a lot nicer.
Agreed. And really, some of the drainageway improvements, it is kind of a specialized design element. You know, it's not, it's not as simple, or it's not as common as a roadway or something like that. It's, there are a lot of engineers that really specialize in drainageway stabilization improvements. So we like to use those engineers and contractors that have a lot of experience doing that, because we know, they know what they're doing, they know how to design these better. And the contractors especially, they know how to go in and be surgical about it. They don't go in and tear out the whole drainageway and, you know, leave us with a big disturbance. They know how to go in and be very careful what they tear out, what they disturb, to put in, you know, the right elements in the end.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hefton?
Just if you could elaborate briefly on any environmental issues that you might be tracking as this project progresses.
Yeah, no specific issues that we know of. The West StroGulch portion is not what's considered map floodplain, so there's no permitting required through the federal, you know, FEMA or the engineers. Oak Gulch, which is shown on the north side of this slide, that does have map floodplain, so we'll be back before you for a similar IGA for some improvements to Oak Gulch that will require a federal permitting. So there are environmental clearances to make with that drainageway, but with West StroGulch, there's not. But, you know, we are still treating it like we would any other project, to make sure we're being sensitive to the area. Wetlands are being preserved as they would be required to be, but no specific issues that I would let you know about.
Thank you.
Any additional follow-up before I go to public comment? Seeing none, I will open public comment on this item at 7:40. Is there anybody here in the audience for a public comment? Seeing none, is there anybody on Zoom for public comment?
Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to make a public comment on this item? Please raise your hand. There is not.
Thank you. We will close public comment at 7:40. I will turn it back to the council for discussion and deliberation.
I just, I will, as I sink my chair down, I will just speak quickly to the importance of this. I mean, these piece by piece add up to the great system that is stormwater of Parker, which is stormwater of northeast Douglas County, which all feeds into the reservoir, which is a public asset that is, you know, full of fish and recreation. And, you know, if we don't take care of these projects upstream, we get degradation or degradation of sand in different places. It creates nightmares. It creates, you know, what we saw in that last picture of the cutting, and just that all of those, all of that stuff that's falling off that wall is going somewhere, and it's all going downstream, and it ends up costing us a nightmare. Mile High, at the time, urban drainage had to step in, and Piney Creek, because it was a nightmare gone wrong. Lots and lots of systems going down, dropping sediment down into Piney Creek, and they were getting ready to lose homes. They were homes that were just going to be eaten away, granted, probably built too close to the floodplain, but, that's a different story, we don't do that here. But, you know, the homes are going to be, soon to be, falling into the sand, because it was just, it was just a nightmare. So to get ahead of this, no offense to developers, but Mueller Engineering, hired by municipalities and hired by Mile High, knows what they're doing, and this will be done right. So I'm wholly in support of this.
Councilmember Pogue, Hendricks?
Just a quick question. On the outlet of this, where is it going? Is it going to Cherry Creek? Is it going to Ruder Hess? Where's it headed?
So West StroGulch drains through the existing Anthology neighborhood. There is a regional detention pond, if you can picture that, right in the middle of that neighborhood, a big, open pond right there. That eventually goes under Matzenbacher Road and over to Cherry Creek.
Okay, thank you.
No comment.
Councilmember Barrington, Hefton? Any additional discussion?
No comment.
Oh, just a quick comment. I just appreciate also that the developers have, you know, they're staying in their lane. And this is another opportunity for us to promote a safe and healthy community and another way to help to beautify our town. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. With no other discussions, I'm happy to entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.348 on second reading.
Okay, Councilmember Hendricks with the motion, and Councilmember Barrington with the second. Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Pogue?
Aye.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefton?
Yes, and I seconded that motion.
Oh, my apologies, Councilmember Hefton. I did not know. Thank you for the clarification. And I will vote in the affirmative. It is a full House, unanimous vote. Thank you very much. The next ordinance, ordinance number 9.349, on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the intergovernmental agreement for court clerk services by and between the Town of Parker and the City of Lone Tree. Ms. Kivala?
Mayor Protem and council, tonight, before you, is the second reading for ordinance 9.349, 349, which allows for us to share services with the City of Lone Tree. We recently had a vacancy in our municipal court, as did they, and it demonstrated the need to be able to provide backup to each other. We have several other IGAs with the City of Lone Tree that we share services. And so under this IGA, it will allow us to ensure that continuation of service for both agencies. Additionally, the way that it will operate on that as-needed basis would be to also invoice each other for the costs of the court clerk or the administrator at their rate of pay at their agency. And that's pretty much it. It's a pretty simple backup plan for us. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rivera, questions?
Just a quick question, and to the last part you stated, I know that we had some ongoing negotiations between how we were being reimbursed for police services, i.e. crime scene and dispatch and things like that. Are we to the point that both communities are fully aware of how they're going to get paid, and we're not going to have surprises come budget time?
This is a much simpler IGA than the other, because with the dispatch services, that's ongoing, and that's a 24/7 type of thing based off of the call load. This is purely as if it was a contracted employee. They will keep track of their hours, and it's purely a situation if the need arises. We've gone several weeks now with just one person in the court, and it's been working fine as has Lone Tree, so.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Pogue, questions?
Yeah, have you appointed a replacement court clerk or a new one for Parker?
We're going through the recruitment process right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
I guess I don't understand, I'm not questioning that you know what you're doing, but how do you invoice each other? What does that, what does that look like? So each of you are allocated a certain amount of time for this person?
So if we were to need for an arraignment tonight, or let's say even easier than that, the one person we have in court clerk, or in municipal court, which is Carolyn, let's say she wants to take a vacation day. So we need coverage for the eight hours. Lone Tree will send over their person, and she works eight hours, she puts it on her timesheet, and they bill us an invoice for the eight hours of her rate of pay.
Okay, thanks, yes.
And then vice versa, Carolyn could go cover over there.
Correct. Yes, yes.
Councilmember Hefton?
It seems like a good idea, because you do have some backup. And would you consider continuing this program once you actually do hire someone? Or do you think you'll have enough backup once our municipal court administrator is hired?
Our plan is to have this continue on on an as-needed basis. When we started having the conversations with Lone Tree, they were fully staffed. In fact, they were a little bit fearful that we would steal one of their two staff people. So it works really well. It works to the benefit of both of our agencies because we do have such small municipal courts. You know, if it was someplace like Aurora where they've got that bench strength, it wouldn't be as necessary probably for them. But for our two courts, it's something that we would like to keep in place. And that's how the IGA is set up, is to keep it going. It's not a short-term solution.
And with IGAs, you periodically sit down and go over the terms of those agreements or only when you need to?
Now, right, for the example that Josh brought up with regard to the police department IGAs that we've got between the two agencies, the chief and I sit down with the city manager and police chief of Lone Tree once a year. And then they meet also on a quarterly basis. But the four of us get together, in fact, it's being scheduled for, I think, next month right now to have that discussion.
Well, thanks for a great working relationship with the city of Lone Tree.
I know people there.
Any additional follow-up?
Thanks.
No? Any follow-up? Nope. Seeing none, we will open public comment at 7:48. Is there anybody in the audience for public comment? Chris Omar? Nobody here. How about on Zoom?
Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to make a public comment at this time? Please raise your hand. There is not.
Thank you. We will close public comment at 7:49. I'll bring it back to the council for deliberation and discussion. Councilmember Hefton?
No comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
Great job.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No comment.
Councilmember Pogue?
No comment.
Councilmember Rivera?
I don't know why Lone Tree would ever think we'd steal from them. Who knows? No, this is great, great, great ongoing partnership with our stepsister city.
With no more discussion deliberation, happy to entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.348 on second reading.
Thank you, Councilmember Pogue?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Barrington. So we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Hefton?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogue?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
And I am in the affirmative, well, is unanimous. We have approved ordinance number 9.349. Thank you, everyone. And with no further business before the Town Council, I will adjourn at 7:50. Thank you.